Everyone could make sure their. Everyone could make sure that their mics are turned on. It is six oh one and I am going to be. I will bring this meeting of the city council for January eighteenth, twenty twenty four order. Everyone could please stand for the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll move on to roll call.
Councilmember Luke Casey. Councilmember Brian. Councilmember Doish. Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
And Mayor Clarno.
Here. All right. We do not have any special presentations or announcements this evening. So we will move on to public comment. Any member of the public commenting or any member of the present who is either here in person or on Zoom is welcome to either come up to the podium or raise their hand on Zoom and give a three minute comment. I will give a thirty second warning when your time is almost up. You can make a comment on anything that is of city business or on the consent agenda. There will be time under each individual item under old business and new business for public comment for those items. With that being said, if anyone would like to come up, you're more than welcome.
Thank you very much. The city council meeting since candles in the canyon. But I wanted to say all you guys and celebrate the candles in the canyon. A couple of minor missteps. A lot of people downtown roasting Martin door, cleaning curtains, Carol's Santa. To be honest, speaking, guys, I think it's cool to know we're celebrating things a lot better. Well, thank you guys.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else, I will. Yes.
My name is.
Yeah.
Please learn for each night. I'd like to know what's up with Brian Wilson. He's not currently working. City, it's my understanding, the city council works for the public. The city manager works for city council. We as the public are paying for Brian Wilson. He's sitting at home doing nothing. For how long has he been doing nothing at home? Justin, can you?
We can't, we can't respond at the earlier.
So as a taxpayer, we're paying for what? I need to watch Netflix. Is there any explanation as to why he's on leave? This is a secret or is it under investigation? And if it's under investigation, what's the investigation?
It's a third public comment. We can't respond. So we'll point this guess law.
The ring can we respond?
At worst.
Yeah.
And will you respond?
That's.
Respond at the end. Justin, do you respond? Who's accountable for this?
Yeah, at the end of your. There's a potential option here. Go over the procedure. So I paused your time. So you make your three minute public comment and then at the end of that three minutes if or during primarily the the main time we respond is during council and staff comments at the end of your time, if we if one of us wishes to ask a brief follow up question or something like that of you, we can do that. And then but normally the responses come during staff and council comments to public comment.
Okay.
At the discretion of each individual counselor or.
I will say, but we can't respond to you, babe. You gotta wait.
So no, it's in the next slide. Yeah.
Yes.
Few minutes. Yep.
But.
And.
Good job. Thank you.
We started it.
Obviously, it's not working.
Well, anyone else?
Allison. I invite you to the podium.
As.
Okay.
All right, and seeing nobody else, I will close public comment. And with that, we will move on to staff and council comments. Dustin.
Today, I apologize. I'm feeling a little under the weather, but trying to make it through today. Went down to the rail yard, took a tour. They're wrapping up, getting everything buttoned up for the rest of the winter. They have removed seventy five thousand tons of debris of already. And so they're about between sixty and sixty five percent complete with a full rest, a full basically removal of all the soil to the bedrock and then replaced new. They haven't fully finished armor in the bank and a lot of that stuff. They they held off over the winter to move the the big concrete retaining wall that goes most of the way up. That work will start in the spring. I mean, overall, it looks looks totally different than it did before. I got pictures I can send out if anybody's interested. Other than that, submitted a grant for Cal Fire for vegetation management. And if that comes back around, that'll help us fund addressing some, you know, higher fire areas of city owned property and right away. And then else. I don't know. I guess I was just here a week ago, so I I don't really have a lot of. Not a lot. Yeah, not a lot happened since then. We had a holiday in between. So now I was snow removal on over the weekend. Lot of lot of lot of new new guys out there. So bear with us as they're getting their training and learning the routes and stuff like that. We've missed a few streets. Not on purpose, but it we're good there. So.
One question I had, there was a post online and somebody knows equipment that had been snow block equipment that was sitting in the parking lots next to city ball there.
Yeah, I'm aware.
Is that something that was broken or was that just they were taking off of the time and moving around and doing those things?
No. So so the skid steer has you can detach the bucket and and move from piece of equipment to piece of equipment. So those are staged there for operations and down. Well, this is kind of a central location. So there's staged there. And it has a standard bucket on it now. I think the skid steer is actually all the way down to wastewater plant. So it just happened to be that when somebody came by that those were the piece of equipment. They were not in use. The blower, we don't own the blower. We rented it for the for the winter to to help us manage.
You want to worry about the possible stuff there? Just the fact that it's out downtown. That was my concern when I saw it.
It would. Normally the skid steer is parked in front of it, but I'm not too concerned about it. It would take quite a bit to lift and run away with that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the city manager? All right, with Sergeant Ortiz not here today, we'll move on to council comments and I'm going to start today off with. Mr. Pastor.
Oh. I'm trying to think of everything that's going on. I'm just drawing a blank. I'm good. I can. Well, let me just say this. Let me explain just into the open air for anyone might be listening. The whole idea is that during your council meeting, when there's a public comment, if there's a back and forth, that becomes a discussion and if it's not on the agenda, then we're not supposed to discuss it. Anything that we do discuss at any detail have to be on the agenda and put out dates ahead of time for anybody who has any information. Let us submit and show up.
During the during the meeting, during the meeting, there's no during the meeting, there's no comment.
But Bruce, I would like to remind you of one thing. You got the sink coming up. We got it coming up. The the thing you mentioned.
Yeah.
Oh, no. Okay.
Miss Luke Casey.
Nothing kind of covered most of the update on the rail yard cleanup. There's really not much else. They are putting together one of the water treatment and monitoring programs still. If the council remembers when we took a tour of the rail yard, they will be installing monitoring well that will be monitored for a fifty year period. The Water Board has not approved that plan yet. They should have an administrative draft for the internal review here in the next month. There is a process that we talked about that will come before the city council review as a commented party because we do have the seat on the leadership team now, and we will be able to take a look at that and be able to comment during this two day commenting period when that is released for public comment. And so that monitoring plan will come to the city council probably in early March.
Quick question on that. Have they determined the fate of the large wall just past where our yard used to be?
I will.
Uncertain time.
They are taking it down. So part of it has come down at this point. It's probably about a quarter of a wall has down.
But all it will be done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
That was the understanding. They did take a look at the structural integrity integrity of the wall. And once they pulled away, a majority of the soil, they found that it was structurally compromised. And so there was real no reason to keep that in line. So what will happen is the wall will come out. They are updating the restoration plan for some. So those who don't know, they are cleaning up and it will spill on the rail yard when they go back in, they will be placing sand in as well as a type of clay filter. And then they'll be restoring the riverbank to as close to now close as possible. They'll be doing plantings, native plants as well as of a draft to basically to get. So that's the plan right now. So they'll be updating the vegetation plan. I'm not sure when that'll be presented back to the leadership team on that project. Right now, they're mainly, as Dustin said, putting together the winter vegetation plan, making sure everything stays in place during snow and rain events. And then putting together that groundwater management plan for the fifty years. And that's.
Actually, I actually have, but I did remember something I would like to pass on that I've heard a lot of buzz from various areas, various directions, that there was a real appreciation for the energy and the work that was being done by the snow removal whole folks. I put up the post, you know, your typical thank the guys out there. There's like over a hundred people responding. So pass on with the proof. Thank you.
Mr. Brian.
I'm going to go for the comments.
All right. And I'm just going to keep my brief since we had a quick meeting or since we just had a meeting last week, not too much has occurred in the intervening time. First off, I am just going to quickly address the public comment that was made as much as can be with personnel issues. Basically, I'll just go over what was said a little bit during the last meeting is that the employee question is currently unadministrative leave until an administrative hearing can be completed. Basically, there's a process that our MOU with the union lines out in that process from the city side and the union side has to be followed as any, you know, further contract. And then depending on the outcome of that hearing, it can move under the employees discretion to the city council after that and all that hearing. This happened. So and with that, that's pretty much everything I have for this evening. And we will move on to committee reports. And I know that the finance meeting meeting is for the next Monday at three o'clock. Has there been any other committees that have met since last week? No?
No.
All right.
While we're talking committee, though, there was one thing that came up before, which was the excuse me, the idea of the alert system and getting the grant. And I did chat with Chief Adia and it turns out that Chief Adia was saying something's going on. It was turning around and came back to what I'm working on. So I'm going to follow through with the new grant writing person on board and work that system that was already looked into.
Okay, cool. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number seven, approval of the minutes of the January eleventh, twenty twenty three meeting.
What?
All right. It has been moved and seconded. It had been moved by Councilmember Brian and seconded by also member with Casey. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All those opposed? None? Moving on to item number eight, consent agenda, which today is one item. The check register for one six through one twelve.
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda from one six.
I have one issue here. It says twenty twenty three on the agenda. So.
Okay, I'll make a motion to rectify that writing and then adopt it. Does that work?
That works and all those or is there a second? All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All those opposed? I would also like to point out that on item number seven, it also says twenty twenty three. So.
So. Then don't worry, I said.
You have the first month as a pass.
There you go.
It's only the agenda. It wasn't the other items. The minutes are correct.
Yep. All right. And with that, we're moving on to item nine, which is public hearings, which we have none of today. So we'll move on to item number ten. Old Business, which is item number A, municipal code review ad hoc committee appointments.
All right, Mayor and Council, the last last week at our last meeting, we had adopted a resolution to add this committee. And so I'm bringing back forward for discussion amongst the council and appointment of two members.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
The only question I have is if there are particular areas that a council member might have a concern for if they're not on the yet committee, but they still pass that on as that can be.
Yes, of course. And any member of the public is also or any business owner is also welcome to pass items for review on to members of the committee or.
Be a meeting set to hold in public so that people could again share that one.
We passed the actual resolution establishment committee last time. It said council will minimum yearly direct this committee on what to look into. The main direction was the zoning update because that's a present issue, but staff's also keeping logs and complaints and.
Yeah, I I actually received a number of issues this week associated with businesses in downtown. So I kind of have a running list. I know Mark has a running list. We have staff has a number of things we'll bring forward to the committee that we can prioritize and then and then kind of work through that process.
So if there's a member of the public interested in presenting anything, as always, presenting it to council as a concern is the primary means.
Yeah.
My biggest concern is that I've been getting a lot of feedback that's just in general about, you know, life in our city nowadays. And that is that there really doesn't seem to be a way to permeate out there and let people know at any one time. I think it's snow removal and there are a lot of new things. So there's really a challenge and I wish to quote them, the case face you're saying that the committee, if they had one hot, it would basically say everybody couldn't understand the public, you know, and let everybody give a feedback. So at least there was that one. That's my concern.
Similar to a town hall meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
I had wrote that note last week.
Are there any other council questions before we move on to public comments for the item? No. All right. With that, we'll move on to public comment for this item. It works the same way as general public comment, except for comments are limited to do this particular item. Once again, you will have three minutes of the thirty second warning. You're welcome to come up to the podium or raise your hand on Zoom. And seeing none, we'll close comments. And we'll move on to.
Well, I can say that I think probably all of us are a little overwhelmed with committee work. And we have a lot that we're trying to do in the city, but I believe this is very important. And if no one else steps forward, I'd be happy to to serve. But I would obviously love it. Our resident planner colleague has capacity.
I would be, I would be a point. She has no.
No, it's fine. No. Sorry, go ahead.
I would be a point to you. Yeah, two of you guys weren't doing. You guys like to bring it out.
I'm also interested in.
Oh. Don't get me wrong, bro.
Wow.
But.
Yeah.
Julian and her her city planner. And I've seen Matt Bryant squeeze a dollar bill up a break. So.
There's been a motion if there's no.
Second.
All those in favor of the committee members being Councilmember Brian and Councilmember Luke Casey.
I'll say hi.
Bye.
Sorry.
I am enthused. I'm just really tired and I have to drive to Metford for five man play. So I'm I'm here. I'm happy.
It's alarmously between Vice Mayor Brian and Mayor.
Hi, I don't.
And all right.
All right.
With that, we'll move on to item number or item number eleven, new business. And item number A is agreement to establish a Mossbury Falls Trail Donation Fund with the Community Foundation of the North State.
Yes.
Dustin, all right, to lead us off here.
All right. So in as a mechanism to help fund the Mossbury Falls Trail and Trailhead and all the pertinences associated with improving that. We're I was looking for a way to collect donations. And so part of the thought process behind this was once this is set up with the Community Foundation of the North State, we are going to get signs with QR codes on them and we're going to place them along the unauthorized route. So when they come back for their sweating and it'll be their ice on the bridge like, oh yeah, I'll donate to a new trail. And so kind of the thought process is we don't really know who comes here and who visits our community in a lot of capacities, right? We never know when that billionaire walks through the door and says, oh, I'll donate a million bucks because a million bucks to a billionaire is like fifty bucks to me, right? And so I think this is our opportunity to take advantage of the eighty thousand people who visit Hedge Creek and Mossbury Falls Trail. And so also as a mechanism for anybody locally, he wants to donate as a part of that trail process. And and so I had the idea and Blake and I met with the Community Foundation and here we are with an agreement towards the project.
Is there a way to get tax write offs on donations as early and set it up so?
That's what this is.
Oh, that's.
This, yep, it's a set through the, that's why we went through the Community Foundation. That's because they are a five oh one C three. So all of that is tax deductible.
Even the little five dollars.
Five dollars, anything to go, sir. And so we are also looking to also establish QR codes for Talon Dolly. And so we can increase our endowment with the with the Talon Dolly fund.
This is incredible.
So.
This is.
All right. Are there any other questions? And with that, we will move on to public comment.
I'm excited, Allison, to speak for this. So I I love the. All right, so the agenda, I think it's great, probably just sort of taking over the management. If they were doing for cash at five percent. I think it's awesome. They're they're wonderful partners to our community. Their grant process just opened up to the public. So if you are a public entity or five oh one C three, you can write a grant in Siskiyou County. I believe it's up to oh, maybe fifty thousand, maybe thirty, I have it off the top of my head. It's a great opportunity for anyone in town, really. So I'm happy to to help out with that process. If there's anyone out there that has any great ideas. I think something around use would be great for beautiful patients. But regardless, keeping up with our partnership with McConnell is great. So thank you, Blake, for doing that work and for everybody's work on on Talon Dolly. It's a second asset to our community. I know it looks like a mess right now, but that'll be over soon. Hopefully we can get back to making our part of beautiful nation.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Like to thank her for all what you told though. She did an outstanding job. She got the grant. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Well, I think I think this is extremely exciting and I love to see us moving forward on.
Did you close? Sorry.
I also I also have a very bad headache right now. I apologize for that. Is there any further public comments?
No, sir.
All right.
Well, I'll make a motion to operate as a city manager to sign an agreement and establish a Mossbury Falls Trail Fund with the Community Foundation of the North State.
I'll second that.
All right. It has been moved and seconded. While this does impact money, it doesn't require any spending from us. So does this need to be roll call or just?
You could roll call it just because it's such a great project.
Full roll call.
Councilmember Luke Casey.
Hi.
And Councilmember Brian. Councilmember Doish.
Hi.
And Kaiser.
Hi.
And Mayor Clarno.
Hi. All right, motion passed unanimously. And with that, we will move on to item number B, review Siskiyou Economic Development Council MOU for approval or denial. Dustin.
All right. We have Tanya here to speak on behalf of Siskiyou Economic Development MOU.
Welcome, sir.
I will time in after that.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tanya Douse with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council, and I am joined by my esteemed colleagues Quentin Goudy and Heather Dodd this evening. We appreciate your time. I, if it's okay, I'd like to give you a little bit of background and context, and then I'm going to ask Quentin and Heather to speak a little bit more about our work. So we've worked with the city of Dunsmere now for quite a few years. And the origin of this memorandum of understanding is when our jurisdictions in Siskiyou County got together to work on a strategy for economic development. Our small jurisdictions didn't have the capacity individually to hire economic development professionals. So they believed that coming together and identifying some shared and common strategies and pooling their money gave them the opportunity to basically field some professional economic staff. So that's us. We are you, we're your economic development team and your participation in our MOU through both your leadership and active Dustin's an active member of our daily lives. And by the investment that you make allows us to do the work that we do. So we're pretty committed to making sure that we are listening to your leadership right now. This MOU has is a document that has been updated. We have a local consultant named Nathan Johnson who is helping us do some assessment. I think the word he uses deep listening, collecting the feedback and input from our jurisdictions to make sure that as we come to this term and for our current MOU that we're positioning ourselves well to be responsive, as responsive as we can be and to try to find ways to share a vision. A couple of things I'd like to share with you is that at a recent meeting of our jurisdiction, our I five cities, so that would be Dunsmere, Mount Shasta, Weed, and Wairika. A couple of, a little bit of the feedback that we heard was resounding support for the MOU and the work that we currently do, but a desire for more. So the direction was that, you know, to go ahead and present the MOU for renewal. We do five year increments, by the way, on purpose because economic development is kind of a long term work anyway. It's a strategy that oftentimes takes a long time to implement. And but also we wanted to make sure that you have a term that as a city, you get to have an opportunity in incremental, you always have an opportunity to provide input. But anyway, I'm rambling. The feedback we got from the four jurisdictions was they also wanted. I'm rambling. The, uh, feedback we got from the, um, four jurisdictions was, um, they also wanted opportunities in the coming years to, um, identify individual priorities and to work with our team to go after some more, um, bigger projects, bigger priorities. And, um, so I thought that was really wonderful feedback. We, uh, take the investment that you make, we leverage it. Um, one of the, um, metrics that we share openly and often is that for every one dollar you invest in our work, we deliver at least twenty dollars of professional capacity. Um, and that's spread across in a portfolio of things that we do, um, in support of, uh, Dunsmere's economic development. I'm going to invite Quentin, I think, oh, Heather, I remember. I'm going to invite Heather to the mic to share a little bit about our work in, um, tourism. And then Quentin will come and talk a little bit about our work and then certainly, um, we invite you to ask us questions and, um, engage us in this conversation. So you're up, Heather.
Good evening. I'm Heather Dodds. I'm, um, Program Director for Discover Siskiyou. Um, and similar to how Tanya was just mentioning, um, the Siskiyou jurisdiction investments go a lot further when pulled together. It's a similar structure for Discover Siskiyou. Um, we are structured as a tourism business improvement district. So we are made up of lodging properties in Siskiyou, hotels and motels, short-term rentals, RV parks, even campsites. All pay in, um, it's a two percent per night assessment on room stays. So it's collected alongside of TOT but separate. So it's paid for by the visitors of the lodging properties. Um, and we have been in the marketplace, uh, our T bid was formed in twenty fifteen and we've been actively marketing Siskiyou as a tourist destination since twenty eighteen. So Discover Siskiyou is our tourist facing brand. Um, we do this in a number of ways. We do a robust, um, search engine marketing campaign. So Google Ads and then retargeting people who see our ads. Um, we do a lot of traditional advertising. Um, we've done billboards. We have ads running in the Sacramento Airport right now. Um, we do display ads on websites, um, all kinds of advertising. We have robust social media channels. We send out regular email newsletters. We've done two seasons of a podcast. Um, we have a blog. We attend travel and trade shows and we host, uh, social media influencers quite often. We also have an ongoing PR campaign where we're pitching Siskiyou to, um, travel writers, reporters, just trying to get Siskiyou in the news, um, in front of potential visitors. Um, so I did hand out just a quick little snapshot, including some numbers that we pulled, um, from placer.ai. That's our business intelligence software that we use. It tracks visitors via their cell phones. Um, basically when you download a mobile app, all that stuff you're opting into is, uh, companies like this being able to track you, but it's been really useful for our marketing. Um, so one thing that, that thirty-three point nine thousand number right there, that number is the out of town visits from December twenty twenty-two to November twenty twenty-three. And we ran that year period, um, specifically because as I'm sure you all know, we saw a really big increase in, um, visitors during COVID, right? Twenty twenty-one uh, was the best year on record for a lot of our lodging properties. And of course, we weren't going to quite maintain that trajectory, but it was really encouraging to see that we're up five percent year over year after that initial dip we saw in twenty twenty-two. Um, that same software estimates visitor spend based on, um, income information from the visitors that it's tracking. So they're estimating that's a potential seventeen million dollar, um, visitor spend in that same period. And the number I was really interested in is, um, this increase in assessment income. So I pulled the number just from Dunsmere from our first year in the marketplace, right? That's that two percent, um, room stays. That was at a little over thirty-three thousand, our first year in the marketplace, twenty eighteen. Last year, that number was over seventy-three thousand dollars. So it's adjusted for, um, inflation, that's about an eighty-two percent increase. Um, so that, that was really encouraging to see as well. And then I just tried to list out, um, some of the specific ways that we are working with the city of Dunsmere. Um, we have supported the Steampunk Festival for the last two or three years. Um, we recently opened our event marketing award program, um, for applications to be submitted and they were full within forty-eight hours, but, uh, your Dunsmere Chamber got three applications in in that amount of time. So, uh, congrats to Cheryl for moving quickly on that. Um, but we got applications for Steampunk, um, the Brew Fest and then next year's Candles in the Canyon event. So that's three thousand dollars to each of those events. Um, we were recently awarded, um, the Siskiyou County Film Commission designation. So we are working to launch a website, um, we're calling it Film Siskiyou, and we're going to be able, um, in that capacity to respond to RFPs from productions. We're going to be attending industry events to meet people who might be wanting to film in our region. We will host location scouts and fam tours and then, um, assist with permitting, which is really the biggest need for people who want to film up here. We, um, also recently launched an integrated booking engine that's going to allow us to package stays and experiences. So in Dunsmere specifically, we have our eye on fly fishing packages where people book, um, a two-night stay in one of our local hotels. They may get a discount on a fly fishing trip or, uh, gift card to a local restaurant, just to incentivize people to stay multiple nights. Um, it's been really successful in a lot of cities. And so, um, we're looking forward. The booking engine has been launched and we're working on creating the packages right now. We are also working with the local transportation commission to provide traffic flow statistics, which we can use with that placer software. Um, to look at whether it's feasible for ski park shuttles, um, to come to and from Dunsmere to the ski park. And, you know, perhaps have bus service to like, um, around South County cities. And then we have been working pretty closely with Cave Springs on co-marketing. We ran a tandem giveaway around Christmas time that got them a lot more social media followers. So that was awesome. We think their marketing's great and they've been lovely to work with. Um, we've also hosted influencers at their property. We've also hosted influencers at Mossbury Hotel and we recently ran a promotion with Active NorCal, who's a popular, uh, digital magazine. They're actually relaunching their print edition and, um, they wanted to do a big giveaway for that and, uh, the grand prize included a stay at Mossbury. So that was really fun to be able to get them in front of all those people as well. Um, so yeah, that was all I had prepared tonight. I think, are we saving questions for the end? Uh, or if anybody has tours and questions? Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, you want to hear from Quentin?
I have a question. What the hell? You look different. Every time I see you, what, what? What is, I didn't recognize you. I didn't, I just don't recognize who's that guy now. Anyway.
I'm, I'm running away from people.
See how good morning America, uh, Kate and both wanted, right?
Well, he lived in the Wild West out in Patna. It's nice. Thank you. Thank you. So as many of you know me, um, I'm the Director of the Shasta Cascade Small Business Development Center. So we serve small businesses in Shasta County, Trinity County and Siskiyou County. And we have offices in Reading and Wyrica. And, um, what's really interesting about my work is it takes me in Dunsmere very, very often. I actually have a very strong cluster of business clients here that I meet with, with frequency. Uh, that level of work is oftentimes really at the micro level and often gets unseen by people on the streets. You know, there is, you know, one of my clients, I can't share with, because of confidentiality, but uh, their whole sales tax platform was completely screwed up on the FTV. So I was able to sit through them and walk through five different quarters of their sales and reconcile all of those and work with the FTV on alleviating some of those fees because some of those problems were the FTV's, uh, fault on that. So, you know, being able to work with clients and sorting that kind of stuff out. Those who are getting QuickBooks set up for the first time and, and being able to clean up some of their accounts, uh, and to be able to better manage their business. When you're working with a lot of sole proprietors, they're the CEO, the CFO, the CMO, they are a, a one-stop shop. And oftentimes if they're not in the place of business, there's no one at the cash register. And so we've sort of seen everything that a small business can be challenged with. And if there's anything that we've learned in the last five years, particularly when the pandemic hit, is that they do require a lot of assistance and it is, you know, very beneficial that we are here. That we're able to work with them, uh, and that we're no cost to small businesses. Uh, we get funded by, uh, not only y'all, but the state and the US Small Business Administration. And these dollars have a significant impact on these folks' lives. Um, this is their livelihoods. They are employers. They are sort of the soul of a community in, in my opinion, and it's, it's great to come work with them every day. Um, I find myself down here every few weeks, every month or so, meeting with clients in person. Uh, there's a lot of activity. I try to stay up to date with the different Facebook groups. You got the, you know, Dunsmere Business News, Business Marketplace. And what I found down here is that word of mouth really does go far. And so I get a lot of my referrals, not only from City Hall, but from council members and from other business, uh, owners. And it's really nice to know that there's actually a a real strong business community that can be tapped into. And so, um, oftentimes I can't share the specifics of, of, of work with each of these businesses because of that confidentiality, but it, I can, I can promise you, it, it is really, really impactful and this investment does go really far in, in delivering those services. Um, it is a huge asset to the community. So, um, I'd just like to share that, you know, in, in my perspective, I know as the director, you know, I'm going to have a little bit of a a bias in that regards, but I do think it's, it is dollars well spent. And so, um, we can answer any questions that you all might have on the nature of the work that we do. Uh, but thank you so much for taking time to listen to us.
All right.
Can I just, I would just like to add a couple of things, just to, um, kind of, um, chime in here too. So the work that Quentin and Heather talked about the, the investment that you make through our MOU is the seed money that allows us to leverage all of this work that we do. That's the starting point. That's the only source of match we have in most of the, most of the time. Um, there's a couple of other programs on the horizon that I think are going to be really interesting for, um, Dunsmere. One is a brownfields program. We've been working in brownfields as a redevelopment strategy for properties that need to have some environmental assessment work done and potentially some cleanup work. Um, and we've been working in brownfields across the county for a while, but in our next grant application, we showcased Dunsmere as a place that we would like to focus that energy. Um, we have a, a state designated business innovation hub that's relatively new. In the last couple of years, we've been acutely focused on agriculture, but in the coming year, we're going to turn our attention to outdoor recreation and, um, wood products. So I think that will be really interesting and relevant as well. And we also, um, have a Siskiyou Climate Collaborative, and this is going to be an opportunity to open funding for our communities. Um, so just to, there's a lot going on and sometimes it's almost TMI when we stand here at the mic, but we're definitely here for you. Um, we listen to your leadership and, um, we hope that you will support and approve this next round of our MOU. And you ask us any questions that you want to ask us.
Okay, um, so, well, we said, oh, you raised your hands first, actually.
So, okay, thank you. Um, Heather, question? Um, one of the things that I've been really trying to find a way to get to change for five or six years now is this concept of who, who, uh, is best equipped to market events in general.
Mm hmm.
And, and the idea that, um, one of our groups, like say the chamber can have an event, Rainbow Days, whatever it is, and they want to advertise and get people in. It seems like nothing against the chambers, but they're the least equipped and qualified and have the least resources to figure out how best to spend every penny, right?
Yes.
I mean, you're the experts and you know how best to take every penny and get somebody here. So what I'm hoping and wanting to do is to have some time where the chambers, maybe whatever, get together and say, let's work out a strategy, uh, MOU for simply how, how do we market? How, where does the money come from? Where is it best for the chamber to do it versus you? But come up with that strategy because when it comes to putting on events, that money could be spent making the event better rather than meagerly spending it, throwing it out and not getting a return. So is that something you could explore?
Sure. Yeah. So we do have a robust events calendar on our website where, um, you know, the chambers feed us their events, but anyone can go in and fill out a form basically, and we review it and then upload it to our site. And, um, we've actually worked with the Dunsmere Chamber pretty closely for Candles in the Canyon. Discover Siskiyou was able to do some paid social ads. We've found that social media is a great way to get it in front of people because you can really target who you're showing it to. We know historically where people come from for these events. So we can really get a lot of bang for our buck in that advertising space. Yeah.
Effectively, because you know where it's centered to get a particular age group, whatever, whatever. So I would hope that there could be this ongoing conversation, you know, maybe a recorder or something in the chambers and you all just to keep that conversation as tight as it can be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
David.
Yeah, I got a question for, for reaching it. Sorry. Quentin, how many businesses have you helped over this past few years in Dunsmere? If you could give me a number. Absolutely. Heather.
Yeah.
I'm going to go to you next, just because, uh, you're the boo question.
Uh oh.
Uh, Tanya. Uh, again, thank you all. I appreciate everything you guys do. You, this is a pretty big increase.
Mm hmm.
What you're asking, what you got for and what you got now. Big increase.
I mean.
Okay, so, so, uh, but I see it being just. Okay. Wait, wait, wait.
I know. We'll share the mic.
Miss Heather. You talk about the, uh, the the movie lady, I forgot her name. You guys were working with her?
Sabrina. Yeah.
Sabrina. Great girl. Great. There was a movie that was produced in Dunsmere. Uh, I happened to be in it and, and I seen it. Uh, there's a way that you could make, maybe possible someday have a showing, maybe at our own theater. You guys are all about making Siskiyou stuff happen.
Yeah.
Okay. This is a big change, big, big. The movie for Dunsmere to see that was created here in our own theater would be.
Love it.
Hanging on the cake, just saying. Quentin, you got a number for?
Yes, I currently have twenty-six active business clients in cities.
Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion whenever you're ready.
If you have a, thank you very much.
Appreciate y'all.
Uh, I have a number of questions, though probably involve all three of you. First, thank you again to coming tonight. Um, had the opportunity to work with, uh, Quentin very tangentially on a couple of projects and it's very active in our community. And it's great to see Discover Siskiyou kind of blossom into public partner in our community. Um, I guess I'd just like to start the benefit of the public and whole room here. Um, what type of organization is SEDC and what is its mission?
So the, um, Economic Development Council is a nonprofit.
No problem.
Yes. And it's been around since, uh, nineteen eighty-five. So that makes us about getting close to forty years old as an organization. Um, with, uh, consistent, um, you know, track record of service for the jurisdictions. We have a private board of directors, um, volunteers. We have, uh, two members from Dunsmere sitting on our board um, right now. So, um, good solid representation from the community. We look around the community to try to make sure that we get good representation. Both.
Sorry to interrupt you. How many board members are there total?
There's twelve.
Twelve, okay.
Yeah. Um, and let's see, what was the rest of the question you asked me? I'm sorry.
What is its mission?
Our mission is economic development to promote the, um, growth, um, expansion and retention of businesses across Siskiyou County.
Countywide.
Countywide jurisdictions. Including all the jurisdictions. Correct. Yes.
Okay. Um, then to give you a sense of this organization and everyone here, I mean, obviously if I read this MOU, it looks as if, uh, the major stakeholders here are county first of all, because it comes to everything. And then, uh, almost based off population, economic output already, all the cities subsequently. Um, that's not in my experience with your organization necessarily, who all the stakeholders are. So, um, I guess when it comes to say funding sources, um, who is it who is, because if I look at some of you, I'd almost think there'd be a board member from each of these cities, you know, involved overlooking that. And that'd be a great way to set it up. So how does, how did, how has the organization set up a system for board members? And is the city, are the cities an important part of that central mission? Because it sounds like your mission overlaps just perfectly with the cities and counties.
Yeah, I think that's actually a really wonderful question because it kind of speaks to the, you know, sort of history of where, how we've come to where we are. Um, and when you look at Economic Development Council's, you know, peers of ours across the country, um, you'll see a lot of similarities. Um, purposely, we look for private sector leadership on our board. But I will share with you that because of this MOU, um, the public sector has a lot of say in the direction that we go. So we kind of sit in this balancing space. Um, we do have one member of our jurisdiction MOU already seated on our board and, um, that's a member of the county. There has been a request, so, um, I've heard the coin, the term coined, the I five corridor, the corridor four. I don't know if this is a term that I should share or not.
I was waiting for it. I was waiting for it to come up.
There has been a request, um, um, uh, raised from the corridor four to have, to add a member of one of the city managers on our board. And I think our board's pretty open to that possibility. There's a reason prominently. Um, to kind of get to the, the crux of your question is that we sort of bridge the gap between public and private. Our job is to be the facilitator, you know, to help you be, to be your ambassador in the private sector, if you will, to um help.
That's exactly what you want.
But but that's your mission, correct? Your nonprofit mission is to do the work that you do, as outlined in this MOU, but if it weren't an MOU, that's still your mission.
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
Um, so then I, I'd like a uh. Better sense of what it is SEDC does. Um, I understand that it's been the kind of the, the profit in the wilderness, trying to start a lot of things in Siskiyou County, especially at a time when there weren't many things going. But in my own experience, uh, you know, I've watched the TBID grow from uh not very much at all to quite a bit. And I, it's a, it's a business improvement district, right? And it's funded by Dunsmere Hotels in part. Um, I don't know if you are able to share the number. I know roughly what it is, but uh just how much of the TBID done for your funds, you know?
A percentage or just total gross?
You don't necessarily need to grow, do we need a trouble?
Doing math on my head.
Just give us a sense of what was last year's budget.
Uh.
What approximately? Dunsmere is about fifteen percent. And what was the overall budget for TBID?
Uh, last year, a little over eight, eight hundred and seventy-five in assessment income.
Yeah.
I congratulate you guys on the extension a couple of years ago for ten years and that'll be great for that. So um, so that, that has a funding source where Dunsmere. The people involved with that give fifteen percent of that eight hundred thousand. Do you guys, you guys provide a service? It's great. I understand it. We're there. Uh, when it comes to the state and SBA and funding sources, I'm really enthusiastic about the work you guys have been doing with Small Business Center. I think um the more we can have that sort of help, uh, the better. Um, what is the mechanism for funding from the state and the SBA? And is any of it population based?
Uh, first, uh, how it sort of works is um the Small Business Development Center in California, because it's so, because California is so large, it's actually broken up into five different regions. So we're part of the NorCal region that encompasses everything from Sa- uh Santa Cruz over to Nevada. Up to the Oregon border and we're led by a team at Cal Poly Humboldt, uh, which serves as our lead center. And so they serve as the primary grantee with the state of California's uh Office of Small Business Advocate, uh OSBA, and the US Small Business Administration. And so they serve as the primary grantees, which they then sub-grant out to different regions, yes, based on population. And so uh before we were previously just Siskiyou. Um, this last year, we were asked to also take on the Shasta in Trinity County, which increased our funding. Uh, pool, and so it comes in the form of three different grants, one from the US Small Business Administration, um, which we just call it SBA grant. And then there are two state programs offered by the Office of Small Business Advocate. They are the Capital Infusion Program, we call it SIP, and the Technical Assistance Program called TAP. And we use those funds to pay for business advisors and staff to provide uh direct one-on-one business advising with uh um businesses themselves. We can't really, you know, those, those funds, we can't even use them to do like accounting or admin. They're very, very strict, has to be used with small businesses.
Okay, I can't say good things about this work. I really love it. Um, but it sounds to me, based on that description, our region has, whether it's Siskiyou or all three counties together, I don't know if it's pooled or still separate. But the Dunsmere, based in that program, is stipulated that based on our population, we are to be served by that program. You guys are the mechanics of it. So I guess. I'm trying to figure out where SEDC in the current world. Uh, interacts with these two organizations that we really know, see, feel, interact with, and we see what they're doing. Um, could, could you maybe speak to that?
I have a question that tied directly to that question that, if you wouldn't mind lumping it in the same answer, and it's kind of. How is the funding split between these two halves? We'll just say that we've heard from tonight.
And not to curate it too much, but I'd also like as a detail to know what percent, what percentage of TBID's funding and uh small business. Funding uh is paid to SEDC and how that, how that works.
Yeah, yeah, so I can, I can speak to the, to the small business side. And so if you look at our total operating budget, it, it, it probably wouldn't, you know, encroach to a, like a fifty percent where it would be one-on-one with uh um the TBID. My, my total annual operating budget for all three counties is approximately three hundred thousand dollars. So that's total, total, all-inclusive.
A lot.
It's not a lot, no. Uh, the, the question I think you might be alluding to is, do I make like finance quotas based on regions within my territory and that's not?
No, I, I think um, I, it's fascinating, um, as far as how that accountability works. I'm more going, not, you know, from you, your, your system setup, how does EDC? Because I've always been told you work for Siskiyou Economic Development Council. Um, how is Siskiyou Economic Development Council involved with that program?
Gotcha.
And how with the TBID and what is the compensation, compensation relationship?
Gotcha.
Other words, what I'm going for here is understanding what EDC is um in the reality of finance. What are the funding mechanisms? Because I think you're doing more work than this can support. Um, but I want to be very clear on. Well, I, I want the full picture, because I've, I've had a lot of questions about it, so that's what I'm after.
I wish that I would have brought a copy of our budget for you this evening, but I will send you one, um, and you're welcome to have it at any point. So yes, to, to your point, our organization, the EDC is the host organization of all of this work. And um.
Meaning these, these two in addition to the climate and other stuff?
Yes, yes, um, yes, yes. So um, and most of the programs that we operate, we use the money that you make as a contribution to us. Um, as the seed money or the match money, because almost all state and federal grants that we work with anyway require at least some local match. And so if you were to take, um, the TBID is a really great example in economic development words, we would have called it a sector strategy. And in the early days of working on creating the Tourism and Business Improvement District, um, it was actually a real high priority for Dunsmere. We used that match money to do some strategic planning to begin with. We actually spent, gosh, I want to say, I bet we were in strategic planning for five years.
I, I think uh, I, I've met TBID organization as they were getting ready to launch the actual public side, so.
Yeah.
I, I recognize that, but um more to my point of that eight hundred thousand dollar budget, how much does SEDC receive? You know, not to be exact.
Oh.
Uh, to host and what is the hosting response?
Three percent.
Three percent of the total.
So we get three percent that's quote unquote for the purpose of administrative overhead. And then by um statute, by California statute, um ninety-seven percent, am I doing the math right? Has to be used for marketing programs.
Do you administer, uh, just, does TBID have its own direct employees?
No, we are the TBID. The EDC is the TBID.
Or is the host of the TBID?
We, yes, but we are the legal entity, are it.
So your board is the board of the.
We have a management committee that is comprised of lodging property owners that our board appoints. And then they give them uh authority to oversee the budget.
It can be really common in development authorities, um, for example, Mount Chastity Council is both a Mount Chastity Council and it's also a development authority and under shared bonds for other tax funding mechanisms. I think they have the USDA um grant that they use for their wastewater plant that requires that to become a development. Um, board on top of that, and so it's, it's serving in both roles.
Yeah, I think I understand that. I wasn't sure how separated or combined, but it sounds like it's very combined. Uh, so all the employees for Discover Siskiyou, all that effort, it's like you just market Quentin. Needed to work on Discover Siskiyou, a real pinch. He definitely hours down.
I don't, I don't think I've actually ever received a Discover Siskiyou dollar in my career at least.
I think you've been very busy on.
On the business side.
Yeah, 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 but theoretically, it's that, we'll give you that flexibility.
All of our, yeah, all of our employees track their time and they um keep records of it so that we can um, you know, make sure that.
I, I track time to SEDC. Really often, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so then, so you've got TBID, um, SBPC, and a couple other things going. I guess I, I'd just like a fuller picture of um. How we can do the work of economic development in Dunsmere better. I'm not saying anything bad about your guys' organization. I think it has a good countywide approach. Uh, Dunsmere is very laser focused on revitalization. We go out and get grants, we don't pick no per answer. Um, and our county office isn't uh on board at that same type of proactive behavior. Um, you know, i- if it's more funding, you guys need to expand this nonprofit mission. I'm surprised you weren't more involved with maybe responding to RFPs for something like that, uh, Dunsmere revitalization program we have.
Oh, I, I, I wrote that RFP.
Okay.
For you guys, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we, and that's a common thing that we would do for one of our jurisdictions is to find it, so. Keep in mind that this MOU is about coming together in a shared strategy that is bigger than one single jurisdiction. And that was the feedback that we got from the four city managers recently was, we don't want to be limited. We want to have access to you as a team to do some really important and targeted work in addition. So they um requested that we be open to the possibility of professional services agreements with each of our jurisdictions. So that they could have access to our team.
Yeah.
Um, and so we're, we're, I think that's where you're headed and that's.
Where I'm headed, I guess essentially, it's, you know, Dunsmere is a city without enough resources. We're going to achieve a lot, we're well on our way to, to some of it, and with your guys' help. So every dollar here really counts. It's not that I don't think we should go from six thousand to fifteen thousand dollars towards economic development. It's, is every penny of that sent best to the organization or elsewhere. Um, and so that, that we're weighing here, you know, on behalf of people and. I have just a lot of confusion around, you know, TBID funds itself from our properties. We got set it up, so actually, I give you full credit to understand that if you're the sort of organization that can set up a TBID, do that work? That's a great value. Um, but currently, in my mind, it's like, well. Money comes in from Dunsmere Hotels, a certain proportion of that benefits Dunsmere Hotels and Dunsmere as a whole. You know, we're contributing to something that's already supposed to help us. Similarly, we're at this advantage, rural communities, um, like, just as you can. Um, we're entitled to these programs from the state. You guys have successfully connected us to that point, but then we're entitled to that. So it's, for me, it's kind of what is uh SEDC do currently on its own, that aren't these side things uh that would excite me to want to invest further. Um, and it's, it's not that I don't find you guys to have been a great value, it's just I'm very careful with the limited funds we have, deficit budgets. But we're very determined to meet our goals. Um, so that's why I'm just trying to get real good for everyone here, including myself.
I think one thing too, that might be kind of an interesting um way for you to think about it is that if, because we've come together as an organization, we've evolved over the years. To um pursue these initiatives and we've grown as a result of it. In another community, um, like in Reading, for example, you would be getting a funding request from probably five different organizations for the work that we do. So we kind of think that by working to, you know, at the, we've been able to achieve some kind of economies of scale, if you will. As a result of that, and it's something I think we're pretty proud of because we think it's a pretty darn good buy-in for the vast amount of services that we bring to the table, so.
I'm not gonna talk about it, I need to. Uh, it's more of a structure of MOU. Uh, so I see the addition of the steering committee um on the bottom of things one. On, I, I did have a couple of questions on the format of that. There's really no meeting frequency established in this. It does state that there's a representative from each party entering into, into and participating in this MOU. Um, so I was curious, uh, is the steering committee going to be flushed out a little bit more in terms of meeting frequency, what the deliverables of those are? Uh, the second piece of that is, um, because within the MOU, it seems like there's a splitting language, and so I just want to get uh kind of some clarification on this. So within that same paragraph, it states here that the steering committee shall make such recommendations and modifications as they deem appropriate. And so that's in conflict with number five on page two of the MOU, which is just, I know you may be amended only by mutual written agreement of all parties. And so I'm just curious if you can delve into the steering committee's purpose, meeting frequency, and what is meant by recommendation and the modifications? What would they be modifying?
I wish you would have brought this up to me sooner and I would have created the language of. Um, so the, the, the four city managers asked to actually meet more frequently. So my history has been that um it's really up to the jurisdiction. Sometimes it's like, you know, hard to get them to even to commit to a meeting. Um, so we have a lot of one-on-one relationships with our jurisdictions and then we try to convene them as often as we can. The um four city managers, I think, want to meet monthly at this point in time, but that could change. I could imagine a world where they may not be willing to commit to monthly meetings. And um so honestly. Left it a little bit generic so that they could determine how frequently they want to meet and it's totally up to them. I'm happy to write as little or as much language in that MOU. We have to get it approved by all jurisdictions. And so sometimes the simpler, the easier to get it through and the um conflict that you pointed out, I'll clean it up.
Yeah, it's just, I'll just throw it to you. Yeah, I was just like, I just saw that, it's one of those things that pop out. You look at something like seventeen times, you don't see it then.
I mean, we really do lean, it really is an MOU that is, it can be, you know, uh, it, there's not a lot of teeth in it, as you can see.
Hmm hmm, yeah, and I think that kind of like leans into my, my next question, and I think it's something that we've discussed in, in. The past in terms of how we metrics, assess, and what are those metrics? And I think the shared work plan, you know, again, needs a little bit of flushing out in terms of some of these, so like for page four of the top side, the shared work plan. You know, implement priority, business sector strategies, priority. Because again, you know, we go back to the, one of the things I had noted in the MOU was. Uh, three B, SEDC shall conduct economic development activities in mutual cooperation and coordination with county and cities to encourage and support business retention, expansion, growth. I mean, how do you propose to do that?
Uh, well, a couple of things. Um, one is that the idea of this MOU again is to keep it pretty, um, you know, not to wind us so tightly um into uh. Metrics that don't allow us the flexibility to be um, uh, to evolve as you want us to evolve. I think that generally our history with the jurisdictions is, you know, they're pretty, we're pretty responsive to your needs and um we've had a lot of positive feedback. So intentionally, it was kept sort of clean that way. Um, as far as the county, you know, the question is, they would say their participation in this MOU is a meaningful investment in our work and. And that was one of the other priorities that came out of the last, of the last meeting, was a desire to um, you know, work on a strategy to create a better. Um, and you know, and we can't, we can't address all of the issues between those jurisdictions, obviously.
But you've been able to roll the punches on a lot of them.
Thank you, well said.
No, I don't think that, I know.
I, I think maybe to address some of your concerns uh. Around that, you know, part of the discussion we had was, you know, with the county not being actively involved. Isn't necessarily in line with what I think uh cities on the corridor want to see as, you know, and as we've seen in some cases. And so we are all actively, Wairika, as you would know, Mount Shasta, weed, and us are all actively seeking. You know, opportunities to capture freeway business, right?
Hmm.
And uh that's not the same opportunities in the rest of the county and so um. And so the county not being a part of that, you know, loudest voice and squeakiest wheel gets the most rights. And so that's kind of our thought is like, well, we're gonna, we're gonna push and, and do what we need to do to help our cities. And uh, you know, we all kind of have the same thought process and what we want to see and, and need.
I believe there'll be uh a work in the very near future on a strategy that is for the corridor four. That is um above and beyond this MOU. Remember, this MOU is the seat for this greater portfolio of work that stretch spans across the county. That's, you know, the Small Business Development Center, it's the business I have, it's Farm Co., it discovers Siskiyou, it's um, you know. Uh, but there is certainly opportunity to um work on very specific priorities, um, you know. And, and of course, we have to be realistic about funding too. Like.
Yeah, so. Um, I've got two questions before we hand it over to Dustin to get the city's perspective on all this. Um.
Then they'll probably call.
Yes, yeah. Um. So my first question is going back, just I kind of wanted to get a breakdown of the, just a percentage breakdown of what goes more towards Siskiyou side and what, and what goes towards the small business side? And then my other question, um, related to it, I know in, in your presentation, we have heard a lot about. Overnight stays and all that kind of stuff, but we have um. You know, two hundred thousand people approximately, well, hundred fifty thousand people in the greater uh Reading metropolitan area and. You know, slightly larger in the greater metro, metropolitan area. Is there anything you're doing uh really focusing on just getting day visits in? Um, or people to come up for, for the day? Because I know that's a big part of tourism in this town, is people coming up from Reading, um. So I just got curious, which.
So I just got curious, which you have all of those.
Actually, it's, um, I'm kind of glad you asked the question because you know, I had other things on my list, but at some point you go, I have to stop talking and let you guys ask those questions. We have, um, so Discover Siski, the Business Improvement District, is wound really tightly to overnight stays. That's the mission and obligation of that investment. But in addition to that, the EDC would like to work on destination development, place making strategies, downtown revitalization. Um, the work that, you know, Cosmont Dunn did here in Dunsmere is an example of that, of us working with the jurisdiction to try to advance some efforts in that um realm. Do you?
Actually, a really specific example of this is, you know, my colleague and I actually recently met with Dustin and we were talking about, you know, what, what is a strategy? Yes, our ultimate goal is to get overnight stays, but how can we capture people who are stopping to eat at Gax or, you know, to gas up and keep them here? If we can't get them overnight, we want them to stay for at least a couple more hours. And so we're actually in production right now on some uh tabletop and um countertop displays of QR codes like, hey, you know, stopping in, scan this. If you have an hour, here's an itinerary for you. If you have two hours, if you have a day. Um, so just this idea of like making um Dunsmere's attractions a lot more easily accessible. So that's the way, you know, if we get somebody overnight, we've got them for the day and so yeah, we're just trying to push that a little bit further.
And the kind of split. Yeah, and the split between the tourism side and the business support side, uh, rough percentage of funding between the two of them.
It's a, so what, and within our budget, um, the Small Business Development Center, um, gosh, I don't have it right off the top of my head.
I'm, I'm trying to pull my budget right now.
Yeah, they, um, our whole organization's budget is about just under two million. And so um this seed money again is wound really tightly as match, like we use it like every, almost every program we do. There's two things that's really cool when you go to try to leverage money investment in um Siskiyou County is we have this MOU. So when they say, do you have local support? Of local support through this MOU. I mean, it's great local support to be able to show that. The climate grant is a really good example of that. We were able to say, look, our jurisdictions support the work that we do and here it is a signed sealed document. And then, and then like I said, almost all of them require a little bit of local match, right? So that's what we do with this and as long as we can demonstrate that we're achieving economic, economic development goals within our MOU, which are very broad. Intentionally, then we have a lot of opportunity to do that. Um, I'm trying to think of another good example for you that would help you um kind of get the, um, I mean, as an organization, um. Most of the lion's share of our money comes in and goes out. We pay consultants, um, we pay, you know, to do work. Um, we pay consultants to work with businesses. We pay marketing professionals that are not on staff. Our staff is pretty lean in the budget, but you know. Like, am I getting to your question at all?
We'll move on to. I clarify that, I keep hearing that, but my understanding is, is that basically when you talk about the different programs and paying salaries for the person who's managing that along with the budget for operations, right? That's basically it. So compared to one to the other, it's just two different managers managing that particular set of operations or whatever money flows in or out of that, right?
Yeah, I have a number right off the top of my head that I think might be interesting. So we have um done quite a bit of work on agriculture across the county lately. Siskiyou Farm Co. is an example of it. If you're familiar, that's a direct-to-consumer marketplace. And we have at least one, I think two uh producers here in Dunsmere that are participating in Siskiyou Farm Co. Um, we have, because of the local match that we're able to put up, we've leveraged eight million dollars in professional grant services with the agriculture community in Siskiyou County in the last two years. And that's come in the form of like, um, we brought in this guy who does this program called Ranching for Profit and he's literally the nation's leading expert in helping ranchers really dig deep in their business plans. And we brought him in. It would have cost an individual producer in Siskiyou County twenty thousand dollars to enroll in his coursework. We provided it for free. Right? You know, so um that's a really good example. Um, Quentin probably can cite several of those kind of examples too, where we have top-tier experts that we just um can engage our businesses with.
Yeah, most of the money flows to, I was just looking at my total operating budget, about ten percent of it goes to me. As you know, the full-time director, administrator, reporter, advisor, counselor. Uh, when I pull all the numbers, that's, 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 that's what I'm getting out of it and I'm the person who primarily works in that program, for example. When I look at how much goes directly to it, uh, contractors, um, that uh are usually experts in either lending or social media or marketing or QuickBooks or things like that, that dwarfs my pay by several factors, so.
And that grant and the reporting and administrative piece is heavy. Like, I'm looking at this because I bet you he knows this. But is that?
Thank you for CDBG.
Sorry.
It's not for the faint of heart, so.
All of them is up to Justin to get kind of the city's take on it and then we'll uh.
Yeah, so, so this MOU is kind, I think we've met specifically the last time we met was to discuss this, but previously we had kind of started the discussion and, and uh one of the things that came up was obviously the funding, right? You know, we're in a world that has gotten more expensive. Um, when was the last time that the funding mechanism was updated? Was it like years, decade ago?
Yes, like, yeah. Well, though, I mean, there's been a, uh, yes, it's been pretty level. The funding has been leveled for many, many years.
And so there was, there was a discussion amongst all the city managers and everybody present in the room on are we willing to increase some funding? I feel based on the details that they provide us day and what I've already known, basically that fifteen thousand is as much worth the dollars for our community? Forty, forty-six businesses that, you know, whether they, 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 they know Quentin on a personal basis, um, is, is really exciting. Some of the work that we're starting to get into from the, from the Discover Siskiyou side, I think it's just starting. We're starting on that cusp. Um, you know, we're going to get nine thousand of that back in advertising and marketing for the chamber. And so I think the investment's worth, worth the effort. Um, and you know, um. I don't know. I see, I see value. Um, I definitely interested to be active with the board in a different capacity. That was one of the things that we requested from a city manager standpoint was, we feel like part of what we are getting from our councils uh isn't necessarily being fully represented or heard. Um, you know, because when you look at the dollar figures, the county holds, holds the biggest chunk, right? That's half, half of the total, but uh they're not, they're not active. Um, as from a standpoint of actively pursuing where the rest of us are. And so that was the reason that we brought that up. Um, and so I'm glad to hear that they're open to it and hopefully we can get that settled here shortly.
All right. Any questions for Dustin or City Manager Reeve before I open this up to public comment? No, no, thank you very much. Um, and with that, this item, we will be moving on or we will be going to public comments. Anyone here or on Zoom uh would like to speak for up to three minutes, you may approach the podium or raise your hand on Zoom now.
My head's spinning. There's so many organizations doing stuff, but I'm the new guy.
Got up too fast.
So yeah, maybe that's Alan, so there's forty-four oh nine Oak Street. Uh, you know, the sergeant wasn't here tonight, but he comes and he tells us uh his activity report. Here's the kind of uh time we invested in Dunsmere. Here's our policing hours. Here's the kind of things we dealt with this month and it's super helpful. And I'd love to hear that from you guys. Here's the kind of activities. Here's the kind of time we invested in Dunsmere specifically or on county wide. Um, economic development's critical right now for Dunsmere. We're struggling. And so we're all curious about it. We all being the citizens of Dunsmere that want to hear about it. Uh, and I know I'm in a lot of different little meetings where people are trying to figure out how to do this stuff and we don't know who you are. Me personally, you know, I'm not here maybe long enough to know what resources are available. Uh, so maybe I want to catch Quentin afterwards because I've got a business that probably needs to know you. Um, and a lot of it's just my own ignorance, but a lot of times ignorance speaks pretty loud, right? Because I always know what's going on with our police because he tells us. That's what I got for you.
Thank you.
Uh, still Allison Woszewski, River Avenue. Um, thank you for all your work. I really appreciate it. We're all interested in developing our community economically. Um. Just some ideas to put it out there since I have three minutes of everybody's listening ears. Um, you know, it's just so, we're so lucky to have all the assets that we have in this town. So some towns that have nothing, they have to do things like build, uh, you know, big balls of yarn or something, you know, to get, to get people to come.
I have seen that, literally.
But we, we have mountains and rivers and all sorts of amazing things, so we don't need to build a big ball of yarn. Um. I, I talked a little last meeting about, uh, you know, how folks in the Bay Area that, that I interact with have no idea where this place even is. And they're going skiing elsewhere and, and recreating elsewhere. There's a point of no return and the point of no return is Vacaville, California. And once you hit Vacaville, California, you are on your way to Dunsmere. And I think that it's just a really great um place to maybe have a billboard or something like that that says, you know, a hundred and fifty miles to paradise or something like that. Um. Other ideas is, uh, maybe I should talk to Ernie about this, doing an art show in the Bay Area, Mount Shasta Art Show, you know, and one of their hoity art studios, maybe in the Mission or something like that, uh, to just pique some interest. There's also a lot of music scenes. They're going back and forth from the Bay Area with big artists, you know. We know, we don't have a venue here, of course, but maybe we could do it like we do it here in Dunsmere and, and get the artists that are going from, from Portland to the Bay, back and forth to maybe play a show here. You know, they, they're traveling up and down the five. Um. I'd like to work with anybody interested in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, seeing no further public comments, I'm closing public comment and I'm moving on to discussions.
I, I would just like to say that uh I really have thought that as a small city, we don't have the money to hire somebody to be our economic development person. Really have thought of a relationship between the Chamber and the EDC as being the real way to go at it and both of them are some different strengths but challenges. So I definitely support, I don't think we're going to be able to hire somebody to come in and be a economic development person for fifteen thousand dollars a year, so I support the idea.
I guess. I'm just looking at it. I'm supportive of keeping the relationship as we've had in the past. Um, as far as the increased funding goes, I don't, hasn't gone to the finance committee yet. And I would just say our funding with major deficits is set through June of, or yeah, through June of twenty twenty-five. Um, so I, I was not anticipating this increase and I haven't had a chance to wait it yet against our budget. I would love the opportunity to review your guys' budget and understand the organization more. Um, I, I know the good that Quentin's doing and Discover Siskiyou's doing. Uh, and I certainly believe EDC is an important part behind that. I'm just not sure it's funded well spent for Dunsmere at this point to increases, so I might kind of defer until we can look at this a little closer relative to our own budgets.
I'd like to make a motion to refer the increase in, or the requested increase in S E D C MOU um to the finance committee, including budget details from S E D C.
Okay.
They may, they may look at it and want to give you more. I mean, that's the other thing is, you know, they're, that's their job. If they look at what he's putting forward and, you know, I think it's just getting their input is important when we're running the two deficit operating.
I'm going to second that since I know there were also a few technical changes with the MOU. Too, but I would, I'd still agree and finalize then we, finance committee take a look at those numbers, which is why I'm seconding that. So it's been moved and seconded and uh to table this, um. And referring, referring to finance committee, um.
Well, the other question I have will be that, so right back immediately thereafter is that the idea, I assume there must be some level where it's.
If I was. Well, the, the.
Oh.
And they've got a lot of cities to go to in all France, so they keep coming every meeting. Yes.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, so all right, question. If there's been one motion and said.
Yes.
Can there be another motion and said?
You have to take the motions at the order in which they represent.
Correct, okay.
Unfortunately, we follow Rosenbergs and not Roberts.
Good.
Which is good.
All right. It's been moved and seconded and I believe this has to be a roll call vote, so.
Yeah, you're right.
There's money in all.
It's just a, it's just a referral though. We're not approving.
So it doesn't have to be real. Okay, so all of them favor?
Yeah.
Did you make a motion?
No.
Earlier, no, we only have one though. All is in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
No.
All right. Motion passes four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you appreciate the time?
But if you want to follow.
Okay, so we can get it on for next week.
So it would be, it would be on the, the twenty-second. Mon- Monday at three P M.
Well, quick three P M.
Yeah.
Double check with how much stuff we have on that agenda since it's been a long time since the committee met and double check.
We can breeze through it. We're financing.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when next time you come to Dunsmere, just we have an impact saying on you.
With that, we're moving on to item number C, review appointment of administrative hearing officer. And once again, I'll just like to thank S E D C for attending today.
Bye, bye, bye Heather.
All right, Dustin, if you'd like to take us off on item number C.
All right, mayor and council, as uh we're, we're getting through code enforcement cases. Um, we, in our code, it provides for the opportunity for appeal and in some cases it requires a hearing officer to hear those. And so, um, there, the code does allow for us to um appoint a hearing officer, must be appointed by the council. That hearing officer can be an employee, but does not have to be. Um, but based on the size of our, um, our staff and kind of the interactions and interminglings between all the staff, I didn't feel it was appropriate to utilize another uh city employee. So I was given a list of uh, uh, individuals that have done, uh, done work as a, as a hearing officer, administrative hearing officer. Um, uh, and so, um, I've been working with uh Dave Mason, Masson. And I put seventy-five dollars an hour in there before I received his agreement. It's actually fifty dollars an hour is what he's offering. And so, um, he has done work with the city of Waireka and he's also done work with uh the city of Mount Shasta. And, you know, I just kind of did a phone interview and I felt that he, he was a good fit and was going to accomplish our needs. But in order for us to move forward on some of our code enforcement cases, um, we need to have this appointment in place.
Just to add on to that, um, I have worked with Davidson, uh, not for a while, a couple of years now, but uh Dave Mason historically was the code enforcement officer for Crescent City, California. Uh, he also does a number of code enforcement classes for the state of California. So he does actually help out a number of jurisdictions seeing code enforcement officers. Um, I will leave that he retired from Crescent City.
He is here.
He, he is not.
Uh, but yeah, they doesn't have, I believe, thirty-five years experience doing code enforcement in a number of, or thirty-five years plus in a number of different jurisdictions as well as training.
So does he?
I would need to meet anybody before I appoint anybody.
Does he attend meetings via uh the, or did they attend in person?
He attends in person as, as a hearing officer. He will drive down here. I believe he lives in Waireka.
Okay, so he doesn't live in Crescent City. That's the one thing I was.
And he would, would he be at each one or only at different places?
So we, we set those dates. Um, Mark, Mark sets the dates when, when those actions happen. So, you know, like we have one coming up on the twenty-ninth and so we would try if, if there is more than one in that realm, then I would try to schedule, we would try to. yeah, we would try if if there is more than one in that realm, then I would try to schedule, we would try to keep them on the same schedule so we can handle more than one at a time. And so, um.
One question I have here is you said there were a couple candidates that were for uh what was kind of the the qualification, yeah, let's just say, including this individual.
Yeah, I mean, I just felt he had a good he had a good understanding. He was explaining more about the public hearing process or the hearing process to me than I knew. I mean, he showed that he's an expert and
Phil was important to bring him here to introduce him to us. This is a guy that's going to be deciding our people of the all, you know, it's like a judge. I need to meet somebody before I even think about it. So that's why he should have been better.
Just to point it over to a grand
Yeah. So any other clarifying questions before I move on to public comment? We know. All right. Um, I'm opening this item up for public comment. If you would like to make a comment, please either uh approach the podium or raise your hand on Zooms.
Wade Bailey, five nine oh six Castle Avenue. In the past, when we've had these quote code enforcement things, isn't uh Mr. Ortiz been our kind of go to for that?
Um, he has done some of those in the past.
Since we didn't, sorry.
Well, I I feel that that's how it's been done in the past. My recollection, I went to one hearing on a particular situation. And within that, uh, Mr. Ortiz was the referee. And he had talked about going out and measuring the the particular situation in advance prior to that. I kind of had a conflict with that where he was setting in that position to make a judgment. At the same time, he was involved in the original investigation. I thought that was a terrible conflict of interest, and I thought, well, that's how it's done. I didn't agree with it, but I didn't feel comfortable with it. So I think that what this is trying to do is get a neutral third party without having that same person be doing the investigation, the determination and be the judge at the same time. So I'm kind of okay with it, I think. As far as the position being ne- needed, so.
And is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we will move on to council discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until we can interview this candidate. Bye.
We moved it there a second.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make
Well, first, let this one, there's been no second, so we'll move on to
Yeah, to to uh echo our uh public commentary. I think it's high time that we do remove that least apparent conflict of interest from hearing process. And the fact that it's somebody out of the city, an expert in this field, uh, I think makes it all the better. Um. So I will be approve the appointment of Dave Mason as the city of Dunsmere's administrative hearing officer.
No second. Yeah, my professional workings with a previously incredibly fair and experienced and actively well educated. Uh, but always incredibly open to the situation here, said again, he's got, I disagree with it. I think having no sort of authority is a good idea. Especially if a very code enforcement company that we do get um and make it a it's a big choice.
All right, it has been moved by Councilmember Brian and seconded by Councilmember Juliana. Katie, um, this is, this does have a physical impact, so we will get roll call. Vote. Yes.
Um, actually, if the case, so kind of the way the code enforcement works, if this, if he comes for a specific property related code enforcement case, that money is actually assessed towards that case. And so that would be paid for by it'd be offset by the individual having to pay for the fines, et cetera.
Okay, it could be altered. This is be fifty dollars.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
But if he's not found guilty, whatever, find the guy that gives money back, right? There you go. Keep shaking your head. There you go.
So, home question.
Okay.
Councilmember Lukeyzie.
Hi.
Councilmember Brian. Councilmember Deutsch.
Hi.
Councilmember Kaisler. Mayor Clarnow.
All right, motion passes four to one. And with that, we are going to move on to item number twelve, feature agenda items.
I'd like to do a little bit more again to get a close session on uh the abandoned building situation from the inspections there are.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Good. I I was, my intention was to try and bring that up at the next meeting. Yep.
Anything else?
Question to you, Jerry.
Uh, hold on, I got I got two to add. Um, active transportation plan. So we met with uh with that group today. Um, February fifteenth, we will have the active transportation plan on the agenda. Um, also met with Cosmont this afternoon. Cosmont, um, they're wanting to do a few more. There was a couple of groups that were looking to engage, and um I had not got them to contact yet. So I'm I'll do that in the morning and uh they were asking for a March seventh date. And so I'm going to add those to the to the agenda. And I also um I've been being impressed by um Park and Rec about the joint meeting. And so um they're concerned about funding. And uh so that is something that's been I would probably say Mike has said something to me every week for the last month. And so um I'm meeting with him on Monday to to kind of discuss some of that stuff. And so I'd like to counsel to consider that um fairly soon.
Getting in request for a um community development fund.
Uh, in you mean community promotions.
Yeah. So February first, that was that February first. But we're discussing how to finance it. What'd you say for the
No, I'm just wondering about.
Yeah, I I okay.
Question to you, Jerry.
Say, all right, we're here.
Um, first of all, it's people that walk down there because I get that lot of requests. It's what I walk around there. So I have a problem with you.
Yeah.
It sounds like this. Now, wait, wait, wait.
Oh, that's great.